Good evening. Welcome to the August 30th zoning board of adjustment meeting for Town of Merrimack. The next meeting will be held on September 27th, 2017. If you could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, and to God. Indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
For all those who'll be speaking this evening, could you please stand and raise your right hand? If you're going to be speaking in regards to a petition or a variance, please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you got. Thank you. A couple of housekeeping items. When you come up to the front, there is a clipboard. Please sign your name and fill out the information there. Also, make sure that the light on the microphone is bright green, although it is normally a green little knob there. Make sure it is on. That way, everything gets recorded. We have four people seated this evening. We have four people seated this evening. So, you have an option to have your petition heard this evening, or to postpone. Because we don't have a full board, you need to get a majority vote, which means you need to have three people say yes. If it's a two-two, yes, two yeses, two noes, the petition is denied. And so, because we don't have a majority board tonight, you do have the option to have a continuance when we have a full board. We're actually missing two members this evening. You could still have your petition heard, but if it's not a, if it's, if you have to get a full board approval, or at least three people on the board, three yeses, otherwise, the petition is denied. Okay? Yes?
Unfortunately, I can't.
Wish I could, but I can't. So, but it's an option I have to extend because we don't have a full board here this evening.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, there is a possibility that one of our regular board members may be running late. She may be here. Just also wanted to remind the chairman that you do need to appoint Lenny to vote for one of the two vacant positions. My recommendation would be Tony, since we know he won't be here.
Yes. Thank you, Tim. Lenny, you will be sitting in for Tony this evening. Okay? And then, I will have Rich with the preamble.
Sorry, I think I'm starting to get a cold, so I apologize in advance. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will proceed with the petitions in the order they are listed on the agenda unless the board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for this board to grant a request. The minimum requirements are outlined in the form provided by the community development office, and the petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the board to grant the request. The chair will open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against the request. All discussion will be between the speaker and the board. Please be respectful of all, and in the interest of time, refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the board for consideration this evening, but the board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all parties regarding a petition, the chairman will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate and vote on the request before moving on to the next petition. Please turn off all cell phones and pagers.
All right. The first item is the annual, for our annual meeting, which this is, is the election of officer, officers in review of bylaws. We are actually going to move that item to number 10, or right before number 10, discussion of possible action items. We're going to move that so that we can get right into the petitions. Everybody's okay with that? All right. First petition this evening is Abraham Zebolus. Come on down. Variants under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit an attached 28-by-50 garage addition with a 10-foot setback, whereas 15 feet is required. The parcel is located at 13 Twin Bridge Road in the R Residential and Ocrifer Conservation Districts, tax map 5D-3, lot 116-02, case number 2017-28. How are you this evening?
Good.
Make sure, just make sure your mic's on. Push the button.
Oh, now it's on. Now it's on. Like, the way that's, the heading is, it's not really completely correct. I did get a read down. I think they made a mistake.
Okay.
So, if you read down the body, all the other spots in the whole thing is correct. I'm really, I have to go 10 feet into the setback. So, five feet from the property line. I noticed it.
Petition with a 10-foot setback, whereas 15 feet is required.
So, there's a section over here, like it says, it's correct. It says with a 5-foot setback, whereas 15 feet is required. I think it just sounded wrong.
5-foot setback. Okay, so it's a 5-foot setback, not a 10-foot.
The error was in the transcription from my secretaries that it was written that it was 10 feet into the setback. They read that as a 10-foot request.
Yeah, I noticed it after, and then, I just noticed it recently.
No worries. All right. So, what we're gonna, well, we start with this. Why don't you give us kind of a quick, you know, 5,000-foot view, what we're looking at here, and then, we'll go into the five points.
Okay. Like, just what I'm doing?
Yeah. What are you, what are you looking to do?
You guys have copies of this, this area and all that?
All of this, yep.
So, what I basically have going on is I got a shed, and I got a porta garage. I'm about to add another portable garage and stuff. My lot is like a triangle pizza-shaped lot. Instead of having all those things, I want to do a garage. You know, I'm gonna live here the rest of my life, so I really want to put a garage. The lot is very difficult to put a garage somewhere. So, the only way for me to get really a garage in there is, even with the variance, you can kind of see that I'm, if you look on this picture right here, with the variance, I have to remove my garage door in the front of my house. That's gonna be like gone, and now, I'm gonna be basically almost halfway into my garage door. And that'll get removed and stuff. But without the variance, I drew kind of another line where I'm kind of built into this, my, it's, I can't do without, you know, I can't do the garage.
Okay.
And there's really no other spot for me on the whole lot to put it. Even with it there, obviously, I gotta go into my driveway. I can't put it in the back. There's just no other place to put it, to be honest with you.
That actually looks like it was gonna cut your driveway in half.
Oh, it's not. Honestly, the perfect situation would be if I was at the corner of my house right here. This is where you'd normally put the garage.
Yeah.
But I can't, obviously, because I have setback, you know?
Yep.
So, I do have to still build it in. And that's why I don't have an architect yet, because I need to have, this might not be the size of the garage. That's gonna be definitely max.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, and I'm gonna tell the architect, okay, this is what they gave us. Now, build it in that box. You know what I'm saying? Basically, like, you can build it a little smaller, because I don't know how he's gonna wanna construct it. You know what I'm saying? I'm not positive how he's gonna tie it into my house.
Okay.
Because it's kind of challenging, so.
I just have a question.
Well, actually, okay, go ahead.
So, you had pointed to the drawing. You said that ideally, you'd wanna start it here.
Yeah, yeah. I'd love to start it there, is where I wanna be.
So, you're, would that put you right against the property line? Is that why?
Exactly. That would put me, it almost put me on, I think beyond the property line, to be honest with you.
So, my question for staff is, if this is, we're approving the max size here, if he decides to go something smaller, does he have to submit a final plan approval?
He would have to go through the building permit process for this, and as long as the garage is setback at least five feet or more, he'll be within the approval of the variance that you grant, assuming you granted per the request that was here tonight.
All right, so, okay, so, okay, doesn't need.
Because I did do some quick, I talked to the architect a little bit, and he just said it is looking challenging for him to do this. So, that's why he, you know, I just didn't know exactly what he's gonna need, basically.
Sure. No problem. So, you have five criteria that you outlined on your form there. We would like to take them one at a time. Have you read the, have you read the criteria, read your response, and then, if we have any questions, we'll ask you after, after the response. The five criteria, this part here.
Do I have that?
Yeah, yeah.
I have this thing. Did I not bring that, or something else? Was I supposed to bring that? Sorry.
Nope, that's okay. You have an application here.
I must not have that, excuse me.
No, we'll, we'll get you an application. We just need to have that read into record, that's all.
Okay. Thank you.
So, starting with number one, granting the variance.
Okay. And you want me to read this?
Yeah, read the, read the question, read your response, and then, if we have any questions, we'll ask you, and then, we'll move through there.
Okay. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest by making the home look, is my answer. By making the home look better, this will increase the value of the other homes on the street. I've spoken to my closest neighbor, number 11, which he's here tonight, too, and he would be happy to see the garage instead of all the outside sheds and my stuff all up there for my kids.
Okay. Any questions?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask why so big? That's quite a.
For my, for the garage?
Garage, yeah.
Well, I've lived in the house not that long, you know, and I have a garage, and that got taken up with my kids and my wife in about, it felt like it was about five minutes. You know, it's gone. So, literally, it's like I can't use it, and we have two vehicles right now that don't park in there anymore. So, like, I know it looks, it sounds big by measurements, but because it's built into the house, it's really not those measurements. I mean, it's really a much smaller garage than what you think it's gonna, than what those measurements sound like, because it's built into the garage, you know?
That's funny, because I lose my style of the garage to his boats.
Yeah. And honestly, I'm gonna live here for the next 40, forever. You know what I'm saying? Like, I am not leaving this place. So, if I ever have a, you know what I'm saying? That would be nice to have, you know? And I don't wanna screw that up, so, that's why.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, what, because that is a pretty, a pretty good-sized garage.
No, it is. It is a good-sized garage. You know, that whole section, obviously, the corner takes a chunk out of it, but yeah, it is a good-sized garage. And I'd be very happy with it.
Yeah, if it wasn't my house, there'd be more boats in there.
Number, number two.
Number two. The spirit of the ordinance observed because, the answer is, there is a sand pit in commercial property to the left and in front, across the street, there isn't a home that I would object to it because it's too close to them. So, basically, just saying, there's really nothing around me besides really just one neighbor next to me on the other side. Just really a sand pit and a commercial property in the front.
Okay. Any questions? Number three.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice because it would allow my growing family a place to store our items. Otherwise, we would need more portable garages that I think would look bad in the town.
Questions? Number four.
For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. This addition would improve the surrounding properties because I'm removing two portable garages and the one shed that you see there. I'm also storing the items that are currently outside and inside the garage to clean up the property.
Questions? Number five.
Unnecessary hardship. Unnecessary hardship owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from the other properties in the area. Denials of the variance will result in unnecessary hardship because, number one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because, and my answer is, due to the narrow, unique shape of the lot, I only have one place to add the garage, the front left. Ideally, I would like to have it go all the way to the lot line so that it would be in the corner of the, of my small garage, but I redesigned the garage to only go into the setback 10 feet and leave 5-foot buffer to the, to the walking trail and sand pit. This is not ideal because I have to block my current small front entrance garage, but I can work around it. See attached pictures.
Questions?
I have a question.
Yep.
So, is the 5-foot required buffer for easement walking trail? I guess my question is, I mean, you'd mentioned earlier what you wanted, what you'd prefer the dimensions to be, and that would put you up against the property line. Is there a reason why that isn't what you applied for?
Because I have no idea what I'm doing, and I would assume if I said I want to be right up against the property line, that would just be unsuccessful. I just don't think you could build against the property line, so I thought, like, asking you for 10-feet's lot? So, that's what I'm asking for.
Totally respectable. I was just curious.
Yeah.
Number two under five?
Number two.
The proposed use is reasonable?
Yeah. The proposed use is a reasonable one because our current garage is very small and does not fit our family vehicles and family items. We would be approving the surrounding properties by storing our vehicles and items out of sight if we were able to have a new garage. My garage might look big to you. It's not big. It isn't. It's built into our house. It's a small, it's not a big garage. It really isn't. Like, no vehicles fitting in there, like, it's the stuff we have in there.
Any questions on that? Everybody? Number two's satisfied, everybody?
I'll say it.
Any other questions for the applicant? Do you have anything else you wanted to add?
No. There was one more question. Are you ready?
Oh, no, you don't need to. You're, you're.
Okay.
Do you, anything you wanted to add, or?
Nope. Just hopefully, I got it.
All right. All right. So, let's, we'll open the public hearing. Does anybody wants to speak in favor of this? Come on down. You can just, come on down, sign in, and just make sure the mic's on. Say your name.
Am I on?
Yep. Say your name, and.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of him getting this. I'm his next-door neighbor, and would clean up the property for sure, and obviously bring up my home value.
Can you state your name for the record?
Charles McNulty.
Thank you, Charles.
11 Twin Bridge Road.
Thank you. All right.
That's it.
All right, great.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
If he were to build what he wants to build and put it up against the property line, would you feel the same way?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, he has no, if you really look at what he's doing, it's not, his property, he, he has a bum deal where he's at, you know what I mean? His property is a pie shape.
Yeah.
So, he can't really go out back. He can't, I think it would be perfect right there. So, hopefully, you guys see it the same way.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak in favor? Anybody who would like to speak against? All right, close the public hearing. Questions, or deliberations, comments, motions?
I, I have a comment, and that's that I don't think we see situations like this often, but in the unnecessary hardship, it sounds like by granting the variance in kind, we're still creating an unnecessary hardship because he has to break into his garage to build what he wants. So, I know we can't make suggestions or anything of that nature. Is, is there a way of approving this to, or making a motion to approve in favor for 0 feet?
Can I ask Tim a question first?
Sure.
Tim, is there any right-of-way going in between those properties that you know of that might interfere with that?
Not that I'm aware of. I would caution the board, if you wanted to allow up to the property line, then you're really changing what was noticed as part of this application, which would basically require the table re-notify and do this again next month if you wanted to go to zero. So, I would certainly not recommend that. And frankly, I believe that at minimum, there should be some separation from the property line from the, from a town, even from a public safety perspective in terms of gaining access for fire purposes and things of that nature. There should be at least some setback.
I agree. Do I have a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion. I make the motion that we grant Abraham Zebolus, petitioner-owner, the variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the, an attached 28-by-50-foot garage addition with a.
5-foot.
5-foot setback, whereas 15 feet is required. The parcel is located at 13 Twin Bridge Road in the Residential and Ocrifer Conservation Districts, tax map 5D-3, lot 116-02, in case number 2017-28.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? 4-0-0. Congratulations. Just keep in mind that you have, there's 30-day period in which someone can appeal, so if you start the construction within the next 30 days, it is at your own risk. Other than that, good luck.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next petition, I'm gonna read it in, but I'm gonna read it as withdrawn. Has been withdrawn by the petitioner, but I'm going to read it in. Tony Paul, petitioner, and David Paul, owner, variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a dwelling unit on a lot without road frontage, whereas 200 feet of frontage is required. The parcel is located at 312-B Babusick Lake Road in the R Residential and Ocrifer Conservation Districts, tax map 6A-2/156-09, case number 2017-29. This petition has been withdrawn by the applicant.
Just for the board's information, just to give you a reason why it was withdrawn, the applicant in this case is looking to create a dwelling unit within a structure that was built on this lot without the benefit of building permits. They're coming in after the fact to try to rectify the violation of having constructed this without building permits. The, in looking at this case and some other restrictions that were placed both on the deed for this property and in a subdivision back in the 1970s by the planning board, we had sent some questions along to the town attorney so that we would be able to present you with enough information. The, he did give us that information, which will be coming forth next month when the proper application is filed, but he also told us that a variance in this case was not the appropriate way of getting relief. The request that has been noticed is for a variance to allow for a dwelling unit on a lot without frontage. The lot already exists without frontage, so the variance actually doesn't grant him the use to do, the right to do anything because the lot already exists. If you want to go back, some of you may recall, if you were on the board back in 2011, when Councilor Dwyer was looking at putting his house on Woodward Road, there's the appeal of administrative decision under state statute RSA 67441, which allows the zoning board to grant the ability to get a building permit on a lot that does not have frontage. So, that's the petition that will be coming next month at the September meeting that will have to be re-noticed and properly processed, but I would expect that would be a very interesting discussion that night.
Thank you very much, Tim. You'll be here for that, right?
No, Robert will be here for that.
All right. The next petition. Franklin Savings Bank, petitioner, and KRG Merrimack Village LLC owner, variance under section 17.10.3 of the zoning ordinance to permit a modification to a previously approved by variance freestanding sign with an area of 54.41 square feet where a maximum of 48 square feet is permitted. The parcel is located at 1 Dobson Way in the C2 General Commercial and Ocrifer Conservation Districts, tax map 4D, lot 080, case number 2017-30. Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. I don't believe you were sworn in. I don't believe you were here for that.
No, we're not.
You got your hands full when you get a second. All right. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you got. Thank you. I'll let you set up.
Well, while that's going on, Mr. Chairman, if you want, just a quick, I can give you a quick overview of where things are with this.
Yes.
As, as the board recalls, this was a petition that was back before the board, back in January, to allow for a second freestanding sign on the property and a setback for that sign. Both of those variances were granted. The applicant subsequently received approval from the planning board, and the Franklin Savings Bank is under construction and nearing completion. There is a additional portion of signage that the applicant is, is looking to add to that sign, and by doing so, pushes up the total square footage to 6.41 square feet above the maximum signed size. So, what you hear before you tonight is actually a petition to increase the size beyond what would be normally permitted under the ordinance.
Be great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the.
Want me to make sure the mic's on? Is the green light on?
Bright green. Very, very green.
There you go. Just push the button.
On this one? Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, members of the ZBA, thank you for the opportunity to come back and meet with you. If I may take a few minutes before I get into my statement, I'd just like to kind of give you a progress report of where we are with, with this project. So, if I may, with your permission?
If you're gonna be walking around, there's a portable mic right over there.
Okay. It's in the, it's the.
Before you get into that, I do need you to sign in. I do also need you to state your name, and.
My name is Richard Peeler. I'm with Paramount Partners, and we're consultants to Franklin Savings Bank.
Okay.
And oversaw the development of the project.
Okay.
If you recall, the subject property was at the entrance to the, one of the two entrances to the Merrimack Village Shopping Center. It was a barren piece of land, very challenging because of the size and the setbacks, and as you know, when we came before you originally, we had to accommodate the, from a safety, public safety perspective, the ability for fire trucks to be able to access the property and circle the building in the event of an emergency. So, there was some constraints in our, to achieve that, but I think we successfully did that. And what was there today, if I may? And these photographs were taken yesterday. And so, we're very proud of the project as it came out. We think it fits nicely. It opens up that entryway. Makes for a very attractive entrance into the center. The building is nicely visible from the streetscape. We, we feel very nice about the design, the layout. I also have, use some other photographs.
Is that the current sign that's up now?
That's the current sign.
Okay.
And we put this, just to kind of give you from a sense of scale in terms of what we would be requesting.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we get into the, why don't we get into the five points and hear about that?
Very good. This was the sign that was approved by the ZBA back in January, and. I also brought with me, Mr. Chairman, some photographs again that were taken.
We have, we have the pictures.
That's a rendering. Would you like copies of the photographs?
Can't, unfortunately, can't accept during the meeting.
That's fine. When the bank was contemplating building this branch, it didn't believe that it was going to include its independent financial advisors group, which is a, deals with wealth management, specialized services for customers of the bank. When we got more familiar with the population and the area businesses, we, we realized that, that the, we should add that feature, that service, to this branch because we felt that, one, there was. there was a demand for it, and we even made some slight interior changes in the layout of the office space in order to accommodate that. So it's for that reason that we are here before the board this evening, seeking a variance for this additional signage. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. In fact, we believe that it would be a benefit to the public due to the challenges that all families and households in preparing for retirement, all too often have put off very late in life. And the availability of this resource, we think, would be a service to the community to provide that type of guidance, financial guidance, that all of us could use. The spirit of the ordinance...
Hold on, hold on.
Yes?
Any questions on the first one? Okay, number two?
Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the type of design, type and design and messaging is to make the public aware that this important service is provided in the town of Merrimack.
Questions? Number three?
Granting the variance would do substantial justice because the grants of variance would do substantial justice because Franklin Savings Bank, through its independent financial advisors group, would be a benefit to the community.
Questions?
And this is a service that is not typically offered in most retail bank branches.
Okay, that's good to know.
Number four, for the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. We don't believe it would adversely impact any residents or business within the immediately surrounding environs in any way. And given the professional nature of the business and the quality of the design and construction of the bank branch, value should actually increase. You saw what was there prior to the development of this parcel, which had been vacant for a long time because there were a limited number of use types that could actually go on that site because of the configuration, the size, and various other constraints that we were able to address. And in fact, by virtue of the branch being there, we think it has actually enhanced the surrounding environs.
Any questions?
No.
I guess the only question I have, and maybe I'm just stating the obvious, the only difference between the sign that we approved and the one that you have here is just that there's an additional space that's illuminated, so there's no more, the actual shape and design of the sign isn't changed, just...
No, no, no. It's just, it's a plaque that would go on where you see that white space.
Okay.
And we put that there so, again, from a scale standpoint, you could see exactly what it is.
I think that's a good question to phrase, Rich, because I think that might be one of the things that may be missing from the write-up of this, is that you're not really changing the design and shape. The actual structure itself is remaining the exact same size. It's just changing the copy and where that copy is located.
Number five?
Number five, unnecessary hardship owing to special considerations of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because, one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. An inability to inform the public that the services are provided at this facility and are conveniently located and easily accessible would create an unnecessary hardship.
Questions? Number two?
The proposed use is a reasonable one because it is consistent with the products and services to be offered by Franklin Savings Bank at the 1 Dobson Way location, and which would provide convenience and a pleasant environment to conduct such a business for the community and for the community's benefit.
Is everybody satisfied with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, okay. Any other, any questions for the applicant? It's pretty straightforward what you're looking to do. All right. Open this up. Is there anybody out there that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody like to speak against this petition? Close the public. Rich, you did bring up a good point that really, literally, what we're doing is we're looking, we're moving the 1 Dobson Way portion of the sign down about two feet or so.
And I will note, the address does not count towards the square footage of the sign.
Oh, it doesn't?
That's part, that is a requirement of our sign ordinance, that every sign has to have its address on it. That does not count.
So in essence, you're just, like you said, you're adding the plaque, and that's really, that is good to know.
And I think the board recognized in the initial case that this is a very small lot. This was a challenging site plan for the planning board to deal with, given the size of the lot, the constraints with drainage on the site. So I think in terms of conditions of the property itself, you've got a situation here.
It's, they did a good job getting that in there. Anybody on the board, any other comments?
I do have a question, Tim.
Sure.
This plaque that they're putting on there, that counts for the extra square footage?
Yes. The sign, as it was approved by the board, was for, the original sign, don't have the original size, but essentially you're talking about the, pull this up, just so I make sure I have the right numbers here. The sign proposal, these two plaques, is 6.875 square feet. If you look at our maximum square footage, it's 48, where you have the speed limit of 30 miles an hour, which is what it is here. So you're actually going, that's 6.875 square feet minus 6.41. So let me do a quick little math here. The total is six point, just under six and a half square feet above what we typically require.
Okay, I guess what my question is, if they move the address down and put that plaque in there, they're actually not changing the...
The sign, structure itself is not changing at all.
Right, but yet they still have...
But because that's additional advertising and copy, that's additional square footage.
Okay, that's what I was looking for an answer. Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to approve or grant Franklin Savings Bank and KRG Merrimack Village LLC owner, variance under section 17.10.3 of the zoning ordinance to permit a modification to a previously approved by variance freestanding sign with an area of 54.41 square feet whereas a maximum of 48 square feet is permitted. Parcel is located at 1 Dobson Way in the C2 General Commercial in Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 4D Lot 080, case 2017-30.
Second.
All right, seconded by Fran. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, 400. Approved.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
And if I may, on Wednesday, you all should have got invitations, now that you've approved the decision, right?
They all got them right before the meeting, yeah.
But you should have all received invitations, and we hope that you will come and join us on Wednesday, the 13th, for ribbon cutting.
Thank you.
As I said, we're very proud of this, and I think you will too. And we look forward to being, you know, part of the community.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for choosing Merrimack.
Thank you.
It was an easy choice to make.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, right? All right, I'll let you pack up your stuff. All right. Next one. Next is Sean Lester, petitioner-owner, variance under section 1.03A3 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a two-bay garage accessory structure, which is not subordinate to the primary dwelling unit. The parcel is located at 3 Breton Drive in the R Residential in Aquifer Conservation Districts Tax Map 4D-3, Lot 066, case number 2017-31. State your name and address.
My name is Sean Lester. Address is 3 Breton Drive.
Sean, why don't you give us just kind of a 500-foot view? What are we looking at here?
So there's actually two different variance requests here under two sections. In the interest of time when we get to the five points...
Yeah, can you pull your mic a little closer soon?
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
So, yeah, there's actually two different variance requests here under two different sections.
We're actually going to hear them separately.
Yeah, separately, okay. All right, so what we have basically is, I think you guys have a picture of the little drawing that I've made here. I'm sorry, I'm not going to be as visually stimulating as my processor. So I had a garage on the property that had collapsed. More or less was collapsed, but in the interest of safety, I removed it.
All right.
Last year, my father passed away of stomach cancer, and I inherited a lot of things from, one of those, several of those things were cars and motorcycles and a lot of lawn equipment and everything. So now I basically have no garage right now and just things scattered about my property.
Sorry for your loss.
Thank you. So in the interest of keeping my property looking good, I want to just put a garage that's big enough to store all this stuff that I'm not ready to really part with.
Okay.
And that's pretty much it.
If I could chime in, Patrick?
Yes, sir.
Just because there's an interpretation of the ordinance involved here, the reason this variance is required in addition to the setback variance, which is the next case, if you look at the square footage of the footprint of the existing house, it's 34 by 23 or 782 square feet.
Uh-huh.
The proposed garage is 24 by 42, which is 1,008 square feet. So this garage will actually be larger footprint than the primary dwelling unit on the property. Because, well, the zoning ordinance defines an accessory use or an accessory structure as something that's subordinate to the land or building and which is, to its principal use, that requires the variance here. This is actually the second or third time, I think I can recall, where we've had a situation like this, where the proposed garage is actually larger than the home, and it requires this variant, the definition to the variance of accessory structure, before you take up the case for this.
I remember one just recently off Exil 11, I think, yeah.
So just out of curiosity, does that mean the ordinance, as it is, classifies this no differently than if it were habitable ADU, like an in-law apartment?
You wouldn't be able to do an in-law apartment larger than the square footage of the square footage of your primary dwelling without a variance either, because it wouldn't be accessory if it's larger than. The definition, I'll actually read the definition. It's a subordinate use of land or building, which is customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal building or the principal use of land, and which is located on the same lot as the principal building or use. So in this case, house smaller than garage, garage and accessory structure, it can't be larger than the primary use of the law, the primary structure on the lot unless there's a variance to this section of the ordinance. And then we go to the setback, which is the next part of the...
I guess my, sorry, then.
Sure.
My only question was kind of, I understand why an in-law or live-in ADU would meet that criteria, but where this isn't a habitable...
It's an accessory dwelling building.
It's an accessory structure.
But wouldn't they, in the future, somewhere in the future, possibly turn it into an inhabitable building?
They could potentially, as long as they, it's the, if they were to do an accessory dwelling unit, they'd have to go through the criteria and the ordinance and either go through the administrative process, or in this case, because it's, is it proposed to be attached or detached?
It's detached.
If it was, if it were to be converted to an accessory dwelling, because it's detached, it would actually have to go to the planning board.
So right now, we're just hearing about having a garage.
Just a garage.
That's fine. So what we're going to have you do is, there is the five criteria.
Yep.
I imagine it's probably going to be the same for both petitions, but we, but we do have to read them in separately. So let's start with the approval of the dwelling. If that's approved, then we move to the next petition. If it's not approved, then obviously there's no reason to go for the setbacks. So why don't you start with number one, granting the variance? We'll have questions after each.
All right. Number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest. The intended use is to replace a collapsed garage that was poorly built by the previous homeowner. Garage will be used strictly as a secondary building for storage of multiple vehicles, including cars and motorcycles owned by property owner, in addition to a ride-on tractor, five kayaks, ladders, landscaping equipment, and other items currently being stored outside causing an eyesore to the neighbors. Structure is strictly used, strictly to be used as non-inhabited detached garage.
Any questions? Okay, number two?
The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the previous garage was a legal non-compliant structure that encroached current setback regulations. Approval of this variance request will allow the replacement of the previous non-compliant garage with a new structure with marginally different encroachments.
Questions?
Do we have the encroachments of the original garage? I'm just curious.
There's, I believe I submitted two plot plans with the application. One of them had...
They first pulled it out, actually, so it was the old garage.
I actually managed to save the old slab because I wanted the surveyor to come down and look at it, so you can see the back part of that garage actually encroached upon the setback.
Ah-ha, okay, then I wasn't reading this correctly. Thank you. My mistake.
Number three?
Granting the variance would do substantial justice because owner would retain use of previously existing garage space. Property would be greatly enhanced and storage of owner's automobiles, motorcycles, trailers, and other items would be out of view.
Questions? Number four?
For the following reasons, the value of the surrounding property will not be diminished. The intended location, design, and functioning purpose of replacement garage poses no burden upon any of the surrounding properties. In fact, without replacing the previously existing garage, the intended similarities in design of surrounding homes would differ substantially. This property would not only, this property would be the only property in the entire neighborhood without a garage. Replace this structure only serves to retain or improve upon the neighboring property values.
Questions? Number five?
Number five, unnecessary hardship. Only to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of variance would result in unnecessary hardship because, one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provisions and the specific application of that provision to the property because there is no significant change to the intended use of structure. Structure is only to be used as a garage. If the garage is placed close to the property, the owner will lose reasonable access to the side entry home, as well as use of the fenced-in front yard area where his children play. If the garage is built smaller, the owner will lose ability to store his multiple vehicles, landscaping equipment, and additional storage needed to keep items secured and out of view that may otherwise be an eyesore to the neighboring residents. Further forward on the property would create loss of driveway usages and similar interference with front yard. The plots in the neighboring, the neighborhood are smaller structure, and a view of the existing structures will demonstrate that similar variances would need to be approved simply to build or replace structures in similar nature.
Number two?
The purpose, the proposed use is a reasonable one because the use does not change with the replacement of previous garage on the property. Replacement of garage with smaller structure would cause significant loss to property owner's ability to safely store his four automobiles, two motorcycles, enclosed trailer, kayaks, and other outdoor maintenance equipment and sporting goods. Owner simply seeks to store these items out of view to maintain clean and presentable property, to conform to the nature of the neighboring properties.
Hey, question? You're good, you don't have to read the next.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is anybody out there that would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anybody that would like to speak against this? Okay, let's close the public hearing. Comments, motions?
Just that the staff recommends that if you do move to grant this request, that you condition it upon grant of these setback variances in the next case.
So noted. Lady and gentleman?
My turn. Make the motion that we grant Sean Lester, the petitioner-owner, a variance under the section 1.03.83 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a two-bay garage accessory structure, which is not subordinate to the primary dwelling unit. The parcel is located at 3 Breton Drive in the Residential in Aquifer Districts, Tax Map 4D-3, Lot 066, case number 2017-31, and whatever Tim said there at the end.
That the grant of the variance be conditioned upon the granting of the setback variance in case 2017-32.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, 400. We move on to the next, Mr. Lester. All right, so let me read this in, and then what we'll do is we'll go through the five criteria again, just so we have that right into the record.
Before you do that, a suggestion that if the board were to agree unanimously, that the, if the... the, if the criteria, the five points of law are identical, you could waive the reading of them if you also agreed to that?
Didn't know we could do that, and then we probably will to save us some time. So let me read this in, okay? So next petition is Sean Lester, petitioner-owner, variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a two-bay garage 24 by 42 with a 10-foot side setback whereas 15 feet is required and a 28-foot rear setback whereas 40 feet is required. The parcel is located at 3 Breton Drive in the R Residential and Aquifer Conservation districts, tax map 4D-3, lot 066, case number 2017-32. With staff's recommendation that the five criteria for this is identical to what we had just heard and there are no questions?
Does it have to be word for word, Tim?
It, I believe the write-up is identical for both, correct?
It's more or less word for word, I think I might have left.
One is typed and one is handwritten.
If you're comfortable with utilizing the exact same, as long as you're comfortable and the board's comfortable.
Yeah, I only have one on my back.
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong one then?
It's, there's only the one application.
Okay. I was looking for the wrong one.
We, you probably should have him explain exactly the setback location.
I was, I will, I will do that. So with that being said, why don't we just have you explain it? If everything else is the same, which it sounds like it is, then we'll just, we'll, we'll, we'll agree that all five points are met. Why don't you just give us, just like I said, a, you know, quick, you know, 50-word or less, what you're doing with this petition as far as the size?
As I pointed out previously, the, the building is simply going to be a two, two-bay garage and I'm putting it on this portion of the property so that I can still have access to the side of the house with it being a detached garage. If I had it closer to the property, I would kind of lose reasonable access and I'm still within the setback. So if I put it closer to the setback, I'd have like three feet to get out my door before I hit the building.
All right.
And it's fairly consistent with the previous location of the garage that collapsed?
Now, is this a two-story, I didn't see it from the plans there. Is this a one-story garage or two-story garage?
It's intended to have a loft area above.
It will have a loft area, okay.
Just for storage.
Okay.
Because I have so many things, yeah.
Okay, all right. Any questions from the board?
So, Tim, do we, do we have to make a motion to?
Just do, have the chairman ask for a consensus?
I'm asking for a consensus that everything is equal.
Everything is equal as far as I'm concerned.
Essentially consensus? The consensus of the board would need to be that because the criteria presented for the granting of this petition are identical to the previous position, petition, that the board waives the actual reading of those for the second time.
I agree to waive.
Agreed with, agreed with, okay. So then I'll open up the public hearing. Is anybody wants to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wants to speak against this petition? Close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion to grant Sean Lester, petitioner-owner, a variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a two-bay garage 24 by 42 feet with a 10-foot side setback whereas 15 feet is required and a 28-foot rear setback whereas 40 feet is required. The parcel is located at 3 Breton Drive in Merrimack and the residential and Aquifer Conservation districts, tax map 4D-3, lot 066, case number 2017-32.
Do I have a second?
Second. Seconded by Rich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same, 400. Congratulations, you do have 30 days in which somebody can appeal. So if you do start construction within 30 days, it is at your own risk after that. Good luck.
Awesome, thank you guys so much.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Next petition, Jason Byram, petitioner-owner, variance under section 2.02.1A, point 2, point A of the zoning ordinance to permit more than one non-resident employee as part of a home occupation. Parcel is located at 72 Davis Road in the R Residential Aquifer Conservation districts and Wellhead Protection area, tax map 6D, lot zero, I'm sorry, lot 421, case number 2017-31. If you could just state your name and address?
Yep, it's Jason Byram, 72 Davis Road.
How you doing today, Mr. Byram?
Very good, thank you.
Appreciate your patience. Why don't you give us kind of a, a quick overview of what we're looking at here?
I, I guess, I'm assuming. So the concern was, this is the first time we've ever done this, so a little nervous here, but.
It's the first time we've done it too, so don't worry about it.
That's okay, that's okay.
So, and I didn't know that, I own a hardwood flooring company, so I install hardwood floors at other people's residences. So when I asked to build the garage on my property, it was to house, you know, obviously vehicles and put my tools in the back of the garage. So they, they asked down front that, you know, how many do, how many employees do you have? If you have more than one, apparently, then you have to get an ordinance and a variance or whatever. So this is essentially what I'm trying to do.
Okay, so we're going to go through the five points?
Yep.
We may, as you probably have seen, we may stop and have questions.
I'm learning as we go.
Learning as you go, that's great, so are we. So I'll start with number one?
Sure. So, okay, so granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Granting the variance will be, will by no means alter the value and the character of the neighborhood or cause any devalue to the surrounding properties. There will be no visible signs of a business on the property, simply a new garage that will be very tasteful in the neighborhood.
So the garage itself, obviously, we're not hearing about that, so that must meet all the setbacks and all the requirements there.
Correct. If I can just chime in from how this kind of came to be. The petitioner went to get a building permit for the garage. In doing so, he mentioned that the business is a home occupation. We started going through the home occupation process when it came to the point of having two subcontractors working for the business. This is a very similar situation that the board, the planning board had dealt with, with a similar home occupation where the board made the decision that a subcontractor is equal to an employee.
Okay.
And because this is more than one employee, it does not meet with the requirements of the, of the ordinance, which requires the variance.
So, real quick, I just want to, so what you're saying is there was a precedent set that the two are equal by the board at the time?
The planning board heard a petition for a painting and carpentry business that basically tried to lie to the planning board during the public hearing, saying they didn't have employees and then upon questioning revealed that they did have, they did have employees and planning board said, well, he said, well, no, they're subcontractors. And the planning board said subcontractors, employees are interchangeable in this particular instance if they're coming to the property and working for the business.
Correct.
So my only question is, as far as, and this is public interest, I guess, there's, I guess I'll assume there's ample parking for their vehicles if they're, if they're coming there and picking up a truck?
Yep, but we don't meet at my house.
Ah, I see.
They just go to the job site.
They just go right to the site.
They don't go to my house.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, not a problem. All right, number two?
Number two, so in the spirit of the ordinance is observed because it will be an upgrade to the property. It will be solely used for non-visible contained storage of business tools and wood as well as provide space for my vehicles, which will be parked inside, protecting them from the elements, obviously. And the business will be solely conducted at the customers' homes and not at the residence at 72 Davis Road, never causing the neighbors any inconvenience.
Number three?
And granting the variance would do substantial justice because there will be no considerable effect on the neighbors in the purpose of the, in the purpose of the ordinance. And the upgrade to the property will allow me to tastefully store my tools and supplies out of sight of the public.
Number four?
Which frankly is one of the requirements of a home occupation.
Yes, yes. I know that. All right, number four?
So number four, for the, for the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. The variance would not diminish the values, but the garage would likely increase the values due to the visual appearance. It will render on, it will render maintaining the character of the neighborhood.
Questions? Number five?
Unnecessary hardship owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from the properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because no fair substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because denial of the variance will interfere with reasonable use of the property such as storage of the tools and materials as well as a place to park inside, obviously outside of the elements.
Questions? And number two?
The proposed use is a reasonable one because there will be no, there is no interference of traffic flow in the neighborhood. No diminish, no diminishment, if I can talk right, just diminishing of the property values and no visible signs of storage.
Any questions?
No, I was just going to say you don't have that much traffic down.
No, it's literally the end of the road.
All right, I'll open up the public hearings. Anybody like to speak in favor? Anybody like to speak in against? You've been here with him, do you want to say anything? And I was going to say, all right, we'll close the public hearing. Motions, comments?
So I'm just going to start off with a comment.
Sure.
I think this whole process is kind of silly because for every part of this, this is just, you shouldn't have to do this. So right off the bat, we appreciate your patience and thank you. Yes, thank you for following the process.
I'm learning as we go, I'm learning, I'm learning.
So I guess with that being said, we'll make the motion to grant.
May I make a, say something before you jump in there? I, I think so also because your subcontractors are not meeting on your property. You know, what's the purpose of it, Tim?
The ordinance language is plain that you only are allowed one non-resident employee for home occupation, period.
Wow, even though they don't even step foot on the property?
Even if they don't step foot on the property.
And they, they very politely made that clear, you know, there was no, and I said, you know what, I understand. And the whole.
This is, this is the exact reason why you have the ability to grant variances.
Yep. I understand, but I just want it clear, you know, if they're not meeting there.
This is not a section of the ordinance that I wrote. This is a section of the ordinance that's been on the books for as, probably as long as you've had home occupations available in Merrimack.
So, and I don't think it's something we're going to be debating this evening, so let's just, let's, let's have a motion.
We're not debating it, I just have a question, I wanted it answered.
Sorry for the red tape.
No worries at all, no worries.
Thank you for your patience. So I guess with that being said, I motion that we grant Jason Byram the variance under section 2.02.1, point A, point 2, point A of the zoning ordinance to permit more than one non-resident employee slash subcontractor as part of a home occupation. The parcel is located at 72 Davis Road in the R Residential Aquifer Conservation districts and Wellhead Protection area, tax map 6D, lot 421, case number 2017-33, with staff recommendation. Yeah? Staff recommends that petitioner shall obtain home occupation approval from the planning board for the proposed home occupation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lenny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, 400. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you guys so much.
Have a good evening.
I appreciate you staying so late.
Thank you, no, no worries. All right, next item is, since this is our annual meeting, if you couldn't tell because Tim is actually here, that's our annual meeting, is that.
We appreciate you having me.
We have the election of officers. So, do I have any nominations?
For chair? Nomination for chair, Patrick, if you'll remain in place?
That'd be great.
Just for a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 3-0, thank you very much, I appreciate it and look forward to serving it.
3-0, 3-0-1.
3-0-1, yes, sorry. For vice chair, recommendations?
I'd like to do the same thing and nominate Fran as vice chair.
I actually, we're actually looking to nominate Rich as vice chair.
We have competing, you can have multiple nominations. So we have a nomination by Rich for Fran and we have a nomination for Rich by Patrick.
So then I guess we, you either have a debate or we vote.
Yep, either one.
Okay, all in favor of Fran for vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
I abstain. Then all in favor of Rich for vice chair, say aye, me myself. So it carries, Fran is the vice chair going into the next year. Congratulations, Fran.
Thank you.
So, okay, so the first vote, the first vote was, for Fran was 2-0-1.
2-0-2. 2-0-2.
2-0-2, because I didn't vote.
Okay, vote 2-0-2.
Or 2-1.
2-0-2 for Fran. For Fran and myself. And for Rich, the vote was 1.
2-1.
2-1. 2.
One was Patrick.
I won.
Lenny and Rich were the two. And Fran was the one in session.
Say the truth, Mr. Chairman, I think you should have postponed it so you have the regular board here.
Yeah, I, Lenny, your mic's not on. Nope, I understand, I understand. But it's the annual meeting, so we wanted to get that done. Make sure you have your mic on.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all right. Proposed. What? One yes.
It was one yes. Okay, okay, there's one yes and three abstentions.
Three abstentions.
Three abstentions.
Okay, I thought I had 1, 2, 1, so I'm sorry. 1-0-3.
We have six votes.
My apologies.
Yes, sir.
I'm still confused.
What's up? Yes, what's up?
For vice chair?
Yes.
We have four people.
Yes.
We had two votes, an abstention, and we had one vote. You can have three votes. I'm confused.
That, so what Tim was saying earlier is it only takes two votes.
Yeah, you don't need, you don't need, you don't.
You don't need three affirmative votes for this because it's not statutory business.
Okay, so.
Red tape.
That being said, that being said, the zoning, there's a proposed amendment, a proposed bylaw amendment change or change. Well, let me read this. So zoning board is required, oh, the consideration of staff, okay, so staff is, is asking for the consideration of a title change. Under state law, the term bylaws does not appear in reference to land use boards. The terminology used in statute is rules of procedure. So staff is looking for us to potentially vote on changing the terminology from bylaws to rules of procedure. And this would affect the Merrimack Zoning Board of Adjustment bylaws, the yellow book that we get, this would be, they would go through that and they would be changing.
This is not the yellow book, that's the, that's the ordinance.
That's the ordinance.
The bylaws are the rules that you run your meeting by.
Yes, so.
Bylaws in Massachusetts would be the ordinance. In New Hampshire, with, the reason, and that's one of the reasons why I think it makes sense to change these away from bylaws. The planning board actually just did the exact same thing at their annual meeting. They revised all references to bylaws and changed it to rules of procedure. The statute for establishing rules of procedure calls them rules of procedure, and I've never quite understood why Merrimack called them bylaws in the first place.
So.
Tim, do you have an extra bylaw? There's none in this package.
Take mine.
You want this back?
Nope.
No?
So, all in favor of changing terminology, the title, bylaws to rules of procedure? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 4-0-0 in favor of title change?
Thank you.
And I assume staff will give us the new ones as soon as they're all tested.
We'll take care of it, get it filed with the town court and everything else that's involved.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the minutes from June 28th. And June 28th.
I'm not sure why the June 28th minutes are in there because those were actually approved at your last meeting. because those were actually approved at your last meetings. I think they were just inadvertently put into the package.
Perfect. So we have the minutes from July 26th.
Motion to approve.
Lenny, oh, hold on a second. My question is, is can Lenny, is an alternate vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, so can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second it.